Get back.
I did. Can you just make your motion?
Motion again, Mr. Zivin.
Back, we don't have a full board, I'll make a motion that we appoint Brian Weston, Liz Faria, as alternates this evening.
Mm-hmm. Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, somebody just went live. Ooh, it's town of Brentwood.
And the second was Doug Finnan.
Welcome back.
Happy to be here.
Sorry, my microphone wasn't on. So, you've sent us a number of materials.
Yes.
I think like Mark was just saying, can we kind of go through them systematically and give us an update?
That was the thought. I didn't know to what degree you would have looked at them. So, Crystal Kidd, who's joining us tonight.
Hi.
She put together the slideshow that we sent ahead tomorrow. And so, for each of the three documents that you received, there are just a couple of slides that take the highest level things. And maybe just, we could touch on that quickly. I know you have a pretty packed agenda, so I don't know overall time, how much you want to spend on this, so you can let us know if we need to wrap it up at any point.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, 30 minutes?
Sure.
Is that?
Yeah, I think I can do it. Alright, Mark, next slide. Sorry. So, we'll go through this really quick. We want to touch on the key findings and takeaways, as you might recall from the first meeting. We don't need to craft an actual regulation yet. We want to just start to get some direction, some understanding, and before we go out and engage with the public. And then, we want to use that opportunity to be more informed before we craft anything for you. So, we've gone through and taken an additional look, based on what we learned from the last time, at both the accessory dwelling units and both, and multifamily, and looked at other communities, which we included a couple of examples, on workforce housing regulations. Before we leave, we do want to touch on community outreach and engagement, and start thinking about a date and a location that would be appropriate before the summer. So, next slide.
Can you introduce who these people are for the, for the, for the public?
Sorry about that. We just, I have a tendency to just jump in.
Especially for people who are watching.
Yeah.
For me too.
That's fair.
It's just, we just, you know, continuing on. Yeah, sorry. Do you want to introduce?
So, Steve Whitman, Resilience Planning and Design. We're the contractor working with Fugier Planning and Development, and the town on your HOP grant.
Okay.
So, you received a Housing Opportunity Planning Grant that the town applied for. And the three things we're going over tonight are three of the regulatory areas the town had identified as things to pursue, and discuss, and try to identify some future direction on. You're under no obligation to craft any specific regulations, or actually adopt any regulations. So, it's exploratory. We have a budget that will help us actually work with you to craft something that you can then revise and bring forward at a future town meeting over the next. So, we have basically almost, almost a year of working together.
Okay, so this is for the $60,000 Housing Opportunity Grant?
It is.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm glad you stopped us now. It's like Kristin and I would have just jumped into.
And I'm sorry, do you want, we can go around real quick and everybody introduce themselves, because you weren't with us.
Hi, nice to meet everyone. I'm Crystal Kidd, planner with Resilience Planning and Design, assisting with this project.
Doug Finnan, planning board.
Brian.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, excuse me, what?
We're just introducing ourselves.
Oh, Brian West, alternate.
I'm Brooke Stevens.
Kristin Aldrin.
Mark Kennedy, land use administrator.
Letty Bedard, select board representative.
Glenn Greenwood, town planner.
Doug Marino, member.
Liz Faria, alternate.
Great. Okay, so, we did meet with Glenn ahead of this, and he gave us some initial feedback. We didn't give him a lot of turnaround time, so we appreciate the fact that he looked at him pretty quickly and had some initial thoughts before we sent it out to Mark to share with all of you. So, just touching on some highlights related to accessory dwelling units. In the document that you received, what we tried to do is provide some background. So, there are planning board members or others that are looking at the materials. They'd have a little bit of a sense of what an accessory dwelling unit is, what the state requires, how long Brentwood has actually been using this. You were well ahead of the state as far as the trend for using accessory dwelling units as a way of providing some affordable housing and some rental housing. And then, within the master plan, there was some clear support within your master plan, within your new housing chapter that you're talking about tonight. The draft chapter looked at some clear support for continuing to use ADUs, but then also identified that there were some things you could do, like streamlining the process, revisiting the size and parking requirements, and non-regulatory things, which we can talk about, just public education, telling people how they work, helping landowners, property owners, understand how they could pursue it, maybe even streamlining that process if it's something you do want to encourage. So, the next slide. Alright, so, the current status as planning board, you may be very familiar, that you only allow them as attached units. So, detached is the logical next step. It's been used in a lot of other communities. I'm sure it's something you'll want to continue to talk with the public about, see how comfortable they are, what kinds of issues they would want to address if you wanted to go in that direction. I wanted to touch on, within the document itself, we had identified some other potential updates for accessory housing ordinance. So, allowing detached was one suggestion. This would allow you to have units above garages or in standalone structures. It provides a little bit greater flexibility, especially if some of those units may already be in existence. You could streamline the approval process and allow ADUs by right, and just have them go through the normal building permit process. You could revisit the size restrictions. You could revisit the parking requirements, promoting it through public awareness and local education, which we mentioned. And there is a section, the last bullet we had, there's a section in here now, this requirement for an occupancy permit. And it seemed like that was already addressed in the general building regulations, so you could streamline it by just removing that reference from the zoning. But were there initial thoughts or ideas that you all had on anything we found or anything you think we missed on ADUs?
Go ahead, Doug.
So, thank you, first of all. This is fantastic. So, this, I believe this came up at one of our previous discussions when you were here. And we don't have to dive too far into this right now, because it's a little bit different than, you know, the zoning ordinance, but I'm curious if you or any, and maybe other board members are interested in this too, what some other towns have done with regards to ADU financing options.
Okay.
It's one thing to like have ADUs, you know, the detached units allowed hypothetically, but it still doesn't necessarily help much if it's, you know, you still spend an enormous amount of money to actually either build one or redo it, or whatever the case may be. I know that Dover has partnered with, I think, Service Credit Union with some financing options, so I'm just curious about that.
We don't have a lot of experience with it. We are working with Dover now, and we could find out. I do know from seeing what some other parts of New Hampshire and other states have done, and the outreach and education, often they have worked with lenders who are active in the area to understand, to help them understand what ADUs are and why there may be value, but then also to help streamline the process for a landowner to understand, because it is expensive.
Right.
You know, they're, I mean, you're building a house in a lot of cases, especially if it's detached. So, it's, it's a big obstacle.
Doug is absolutely right. And the housing seminar that we went to, they had made mention about special financing that was available, that contractors developed themselves with credit unions, so.
That was housing finance, mention that at that session?
Am I mistaken? They had made mention.
Somewhere we heard that.
Yeah.
They did, they did mention it, yeah. I mean.
So, nothing specific, but in reference to ADUs in particular, and being creative.
Yeah, I like that. I mean, it's not all going to be solved by regulations, because even, I think you're right, if we lighten up all the regulations, but it's still prohibitively expensive, or the process is cumbersome, people aren't going to do it.
Yeah, I think you're going to find that most of these are going to start sprouting up in existing structures.
Right, sure.
Where there's no barrier to foundation, to, you know what I mean? If there's an existing structure that can be modified, that's going to be the most cost effective.
And that would be a reason to allow the detached.
Yeah.
To move in that direction.
Your garage, your carriage house, your, those are really, I think, going to be where you're going to see these mostly start, start popping out.
Right, okay.
Where the expense is relatively prohibited to, to build a detached, that's, that's a logical next step for Brentwood. Is there any towns where a developer comes in, maybe he's building a single-family development, have one going on now, there always seems to be one going on, where at the same time they're building that, they're building a detached ADU? I know that the regs here, I just, a few pages says, you know, talks about adding to, attaching to an existing single-family home. But if a developer, subdivision approval, start building houses, he goes to get his building permit, he's issued that, starts to build the, the main home, where he's got the machinery, everything there, all the inputs to construction, he can almost build at the same time, almost like a detached garage.
Right.
Well, it's not almost. If it's allowed, then why not?
Well, it says, so detached would just be detached, so there wouldn't be any preclusion of a developer coming in and taking out a building permit for both a home and an ADU.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. And it'd be a lot of efficiency, as you said.
It's a good point, as we move forward to make sure that it's very clear the difference between, you know, a multifamily building or multiple houses on a lot versus a primary residence in an ADU. There's a clear distinction between those.
I've gotten several calls that realtors want to know, in this structure that I'm selling, is it a possibility for an ADU to be put over this garage? Probably, I'd say almost six times, I've gotten that phone call. And I have to explain to them, no, that's not a possibility. But they want to list it as a possi, you know, I mean, any benefit that they feel that would go along with that house, as for a realtor, you know, they want to know.
And also for builder, either on a single-family lot, builder, who is building a house on a single-family lot, or in a subdivision, this for a realtor's standpoint, this would be a great selling point, if he could also build the detached ADU at the same time.
Absolutely.
You know, for monetary reasons.
If we're going to do this, that, that thought in particular is something that I've just struggled with in Kensington, because we had somebody do that. And getting the building permit for it was a challenge, because we have a conditional use permit process in Kensington to allow ADUs, and they aren't approved, even though we allow detached ones, they aren't approved at the same time that a house is being built. They're deemed as being accessory, and so, we all read that to mean that the house had to exist first. And so, we're contemplating next year, changing the ordinance to make it clear that on new construction, an accessory dwelling unit can be built at the same time.
Certainly, I mean, that's.
As, as the primary dwelling unit.
Would you call it a secondary dwelling unit instead of accessory?
No, we call it accessory, but the interpretation has always been that it came after.
Right.
Only out of, because that's historically what's happened.
So, how would you change that terminology?
You'd have to make it clear in the zoning ordinance that you allow on, if, if there's, if you're either doing new construction for a home.
Right.
That you could at the same time, do an ADU. It's not, it's not a huge thing for an attached one. But as soon as it's detached.
Yep.
It becomes an issue.
There could be a 15%, 20% savings in construction costs by having.
If you have every wall. Absolutely.
Hold on, building multiple buildings at once is a savings cost, Bruce?
Excuse me?
Alright, let's, let's say.
No, not in your case. This is residential, it's not municipal.
Let me ask you this too. The, I'm, I'm also concerned about when they go to sell, if they're detached, because right now, we can only do attached, right, in Brentwood? So, if they're detached, what if somebody tries to sell, like, accessory dwelling?
It's not subdivided.
So, we're not, we're making that clear.
There's no condom.
Yeah, you can't.
Yeah. So, they, they would have to be sold as.
Correct.
One acts be owner occupied as well.
Yeah, I noticed that. I didn't know if any of that, I mean, we're talking about changing the zoning ordinance, so I didn't want to know.
I can see that could be a big boon, if you had a 50-acre piece of land, and developer came in and he was looking to do single-family homes, that's where the money is today, and he could put one of these up. It would be a real boon, and it would actually provide some housing for the town.
Yeah.
I'll live in one of them.
No, it would. Other thoughts, or?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One was about size restr, you said revisit size restrictions?
Yes.
I didn't know if you had a specific thought about that, because that, I believe, even though I wasn't here, was in reaction to some accessory dwelling units that were the same size or bigger than the original housing unit?
Well, we say 25% of the gross floor.
Now, we do, yeah. Well, that's why I'm wondering. I thought it was the third.
No, it was the minimum that got you.
I'm wondering what their thoughts were on changing size.
Yeah, because you say a third of the size of the primary dwelling unit. If a third, okay, so it's, should not exceed a third of the assessed square footage of the primary dwelling unit. And that's pretty common, like 30%. We see that in a lot of towns. And then, there's, if a third of the size of the primary dwelling unit is less than 750 feet, the unit may be 750 square feet in size.
So, that's a lower bound.
That's what ended up happening. The original house was a tiny house. So, you're allowed to build one that's 750. So, it ended up being like the same size as the house, or really close.
I see.
I'm thinking of the one on Lake Road, and it's just giant.
Oh, that one at Lake Road was.
Well, that was a, that was a giant house. So, I think that is a third of the size of the giant house.
It says, it says 25% of the, the square footage of the living area, so that's two, both floors.
What we're seeing, we tend to see now, is the 30% and usually a max of like 1,200 instead of a min. So, 12, so Bedford had an issue where they were, I think, 1,000 square feet or something, but a lot of the ADUs that they were seeing were actually, you know, parents who were coming, who had capital, who wanted, who could afford to build the ADU and wanted to be close to their children, but wanted the additional bedroom, wanted the porches, wanted the, you know, mudroom, like, and it quickly gets to like 1,100, 1,200 square feet, you know, for a one-story house. And so, we've seen communities move in that direction, but not want to see them be greatly larger.
Get behind that.
So, the porch is included in that?
No, I'm just, I was adding that in the sense that.
The screen didn't port, right?
We, you kind of, you see people building another smaller house next to a primary dwelling, you know, as opposed to what we see up on the screen here.
1,500 square feet's pretty sizable.
Yeah, so even 1,200 as a max.
Yeah.
And then, the other question I had was, more than one, or just leaving it at one?
What's your appetite?
My personal appetite? Well, I mean, I guess if we're allowing them in existing structures, then there could be a situation where someone might want to put one above their garage, and then also build a standalone.
So, well, some of, some of the communities we've been working with lately have said the first one is allowed by right. You don't have to come to the planning board, but it would be the second one, that might be a conditionally used permit like Glenn was mentioning, so that if, if you wanted to be able to check in, you could allow one of each by right. Because you're right. I mean, the one in the basement or attached off the back of the house, you're not going to see anyway, and the other one, I mean, if somebody wanted to do that, there may be only a few instances where they would take you up on it. But it would give people flexibility.
Have to get there by.
Exactly.
The state tried that.
The way the town.
And they're going to try it again.
Where the town reacted to the citizen survey that we did, and this is going to be somewhat of a sell by itself, so it seems like step by step.
Okay. I kind of wondered the same, but it's where I count on you guys.
How do impact fees come in with that?
That was my next question.
Like, that you don't have impact fees if they're in the house, but you do if they're out?
There is an impact fee associated with that.
They're assessed just the same, the square footage, like finished area would be assessed the same.
Does that really happen, Letty, in the case of the one?
Yeah, quit pointing at me.
Kristin's cousin, the people came in, and they said, we're willing to pay an impact fee, but we, we don't have children. And they could have children in a dwelling the sizes, or the additional size.
The select would let them out of it.
And the select would let them out of the educational portion, which was.
I wasn't there.
Which was, so I just wondered, how, how, how have you handled that since you've been on the board?
We haven't been asked to waive any impact fees since I've been on the board.
So, basically to treat it like a 55-plus is the request?
We don't have that anymore, though.
I know, but.
So, but that might make it, but that might make it easier, because there isn't a 55-plus ordinance that allows for that currently, right?
Well. It's getting exempted.
Right.
That's getting exempted, but I mean, these, these ADUs may be another home with a couple of children in it, so you may have an educational component, additional educational.
I mean, I'm just going to point out that even the 55-plus communities can have children, because up to 15% of the units can be, are not age restricted.
But it seems like that's something we ought to, ought to address.
Why don't we just note some of these things down? I know we can't, we can't debate.
Getting lost in the weeds.
No, I think just flagging them and having this as a list of options to continue to talk about.
The next one, by the revisit size restrictions, Steph had made a note too, by revisit parking requirements, and if you had any specific recommended changes. And one, for no particular reason that I have, is, no reason, no reason, is that it not have a separate driveway. So, if it's truly an accessory dwelling unit, that's supposed to be part of the main unit, that it.
Okay.
Uses the same driveway.
That's purely hypothetical. I would guess that there would be some, if you started to allow detached, there would be some cases where having a separate driveway, separate parking would make more sense.
But right now, when you have. Where they have to ask.
Yeah. Well, yeah, maybe that's subject to approval. But right now, you know, we have the frontage requirement and driveway requirement.
Alright, well, let's table it for now.
Table it for now, but.
And we can look at kind of a decision tree for attached and detached, and give you some options for the parking.
I think it's important, because that's how Brentwood sold the first ADU ordinance, was our language says, maintain the character of the use of the.
Which I totally understand.
So, if you have two driveways.
It changes it.
That changes.
Okay.
It would be, the intent of this is to create more housing without creating the look of more housing.
Adding density.
Yeah. So, I think you need to use a little caution in the driveway aspect of it. But it is a valid point to say, if your garage is way over here.
Right.
You know, why are we building a driveway? The road might be closer in some, some instances. So, I'm not sure how you'd balance that.
Maybe you should build, build the ADU close enough to make it look more like a single family.
I, I think that's.
Well, if a barn is a barn, and it's over there.
Yeah.
It's an existing structure. Why would I want to add another structure?
It probably has a road to.
That goes to on the road. Some barns are further away from the homestead, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Moving on. Okay.
Anything else on the ADUs? Okay. Mark, can we go to the next slide? So, the other thing we looked at and talked to Glenn about was your multifamily housing. And this, I think Crystal aged three years, trying to sort out your zoning and understand it, and find all the places where multifamily come into play. So, what I can tell you is, we looked at what's allowed now, we looked at the areas, we looked at some of the limitations, the, some of the density issues don't make, I mean, you haven't seen multifamily happen here for a reason. The ordinance doesn't work well. We talked about that last time. The density doesn't work well. It doesn't encourage some of the types of like missing middle-type multifamily that you might want to see. And so, I would actually jump, let's jump to the next slide, Mark, because these are the points we really wanted to drive home. The most important thing is at the bottom. You think you need new ordinance, and you kind of agreed to that, I think, last time, but we wanted to go through and take a closer look and get caught up to where all you are. I think we could create something that's much more user-friendly and really clarifies what you can do in the 125 corridor versus these other districts. There are some definitions that we flagged in the document that's before you, that just, some of them are just a little bit older, or there's some confusion between what's a dwelling unit, what's a living unit, updating multifamily dwelling definition, and then modifying the zoning, rather than trying to go through and just fix some of the inconsistencies and make it workable, the way we talked with Glenn, just starting fresh. So, at the time, we do that. What we'd want to do is, but Mark, who couldn't be here because he had a conflict, he may have mentioned that last time, what he's prepared to do is to kind of go through and take what we've learned from this, and what I take, what we take from you tonight, and go through and create an outline of the, the way he would structure it, and bring that back to you next month, so we can look at it together and see, okay, is this moving in the right direction? Does it feel too complex? And some of the things that we're thinking about are, you know, the places along 125 that you talked about in interest of mixed use, you know, how do we work that into your ordinance so that the multifamily could fit either within those structures or to behind them, where they're less visible from 125? And we had just done a project with Farmington on that, where they wanted to create a couple of nodes, mixed use nodes of development, and they would allow multifamily in other places, but they wanted it back behind some of the other uses.
We have a design review coming up on the 6th. That's exactly, exactly.
Is it really?
What you're describing.
Is it off 125, Mark?
Yes.
Oh, it is? Okay. That's interesting. What interesting timing.
It's interesting that it's not allowed, but.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And that we talked about.
Let us know how it goes, Glenn. What was, I want to make sure we're hearing from you. What were some of the things that came up in notes about that section? Observations, things that occurred to any of you?
I think everybody agrees it needs to be kind of an overlay district of our, our commercial 125 zone. We also have, it isn't allowed on Route 27, where we could include 27, Route 27.
Yep.
We have basically three commercial, or not commercial, industrial zones, 125, 27, and Pine Road. But.
Yes.
Pine Road really should be, my estimation, axed off. Most of it's been developed anyways, heavy industrial.
That's what it looked like from aerials.
Small section on, on the south end, it's only 100 feet. This is probably 1,500 feet. It's still residential, but it just doesn't seem to fit well with.
Yeah, we wouldn't want.
How about other parts of that district, though, aside from Pine Road?
Well, Pine Road basically is.
That whole.
Industrial.
Right. Okay.
But.
And there's nothing else beyond that.
Okay.
The residential section, at least, has been built out now. There's a subdivision, a sharp subdivision there, four, five years ago.
And then, 125 and 27 would be commercial.
Right.
Which we can have housing, but not multifamily.
Right.
Correct, right there.
Or a mixed use. That's why I'm mentioning it. If we're going to start rewriting ordinances.
It's an opportunity.
Maybe, it's an opportunity to create a mixed use ordinance. And when you look at that plan, you'll see what that could possibly be.
Well, didn't we get one a little while?
They're coming back.
Oh, it's the same one?
Yes.
Similar.
Because you remember, I didn't even remember, because it never made it to the design review phase. They withdrew it before the meeting.
Yeah, but I remember being like, oh, this is a great idea.
Yeah, and I didn't find that plan until people started inquiring about that property. So, and then, they came before, they're going to, you'll hear it on the 6th.
Right.
Yeah, 125 is a fairly long stretch of road.
Yeah.
For Brentwood, scale-wise. But the impediment is the west side of 125 is heavy wetland. I mean, it drops right off into, well, Spruce Swamp. It's a.
Okay.
2,500 acre swamp in Fremont that pretty much comes right up within a, probably 250, 300 feet of most of the parcels along there. So, try to push things back too far.
Sure, on that side, it may be problematic. Would you be in favor of multifamily developments by themselves, not mixed use there as well?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I think what's nice, having looked at your zoning map with all of you, if you need to provide this as a use, that's probably where people would rather see it than within the balance of your rural residential area, so.
May have changed, changed the setbacks. We have 120-foot building setback currently in our current zone, which takes a good chunk of the.
Okay.
Upland soil out of the picture. So, maybe that should be revisited. The theory was, 25, 30 years ago when that was put in, that 125 would expand to three or four lanes.
Oh, really?
So, that was, it seemed to make planning sense. I think Glenn told us to do that. But it made sense. I mean, it was a sensible, Kathy Ryan and Donna Nolan.
125, not 120.
Okay, so.
Get it right.
But they will attempt to do that. However, if you build too close to the road, that's going to conflict that as well, right?
But there's just the interaction with different ordinances.
How, how much is 27 is wet? Like, is there a lot of 20?
27 is wet on.
Is very wet everywhere.
On both sides.
The part that's not wet is going to be Prescott. The part that's not wet is going to be Prescott.
And then we have the multifamily now is on north, right?
Mm-hmm. There's, there's some usable property there.
Not, but very much.
There's not a lot.
Just residential, not mixed.
Right, okay.
But this is not a bad idea, still leave that as an option.
What?
North Road.
For multifamily, yeah, keep, keep that, but-
Yeah.
But not mixed use.
The, the one thing that I flagged that I think would be difficult for people is the maximum of up to 24 units. I think that would be a big jump.
Yeah, so the reason Mark suggested that is just economics. You know, to get a garden style buil, garden style building or a couple garden style buildings to be workable, whether they're for rent or for sale as condos, you need a number of units to make it work. Do you think that there's a number that people would be in favor of? Do you think, do you think-
Ten.
Right. I mean, we can use, we can use the outreach and engagement to show people some pictures and show them some, as Crystal did here, show them some different configurations and give them a sense.
Isn't the limit, limiting factor really is the soil? So obviously it has to pass DES and you can make reference in your DS.
Right, right.
And Glenn's always been, been an advocate and actually wrote our first, with some help from Soil Conservation, our first lot size by soil type ordinance. So we kind of need to work that back into our regulations. It's in our regulation now, but we need to strike the two acre, we have a, you read our-
Yeah.
Lot size by soil time, and it gives you all the tables. Then it says, but no lot will be less than two acres. So somehow we have to strike that out of the equation.
Okay.
The other thing with the north road, you have all of those county buildings and nobody is even occupying the big, big one, the $64 million one. So I think that the density of jail, Rockingham, nursing home, the people that live in the townhouse is there. And the big building that's the county building, I think that that would be hard to put lots more density on north road.
Oh, you just mean in terms of the activity on the-
In terms of the flow and, yeah. I mean, there's going to be an awful lot of things there.
I mean, we don't have any control over the-
No, I know, but, but in terms of-
Adding more?
County- Adding more. You know, there's already three or four building, county building-
Leave that option. I mean, one thing we require, we do some traffic studies occasionally. I don't think you're going to see North Road queuing up with traffic, even if you had a couple multifamily.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's a state road. It's like the most perfect road you could put anything on because we don't have to pay for it. That's, that's the fact of the matter.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean they're going to upkeep it up.
So any, anything else you guys want to flag right now? And there's a lot of, Steph has a few notes in here, we won't go through all of them. But any other major things you want to flag for future discussion?
I just wanted to touch upon that density just a little bit. That was 24 units per acre, correct?
No.
24 units per building.
Per building.
Yeah.
There was enough, I thought I read something per acre.
12 per acre.
12 per acre.
Yeah, that sounds right. And I think, as you pointed out, it's going to depend on what you can do for your treatment, you know, for the-
Right, that really should be the driver.
Right.
When we say unit, we're saying two bedroom home?
A dwelling unit.
A dw, so it can be a three, three bedroom?
A bathroom.
Could be.
As long as the-
Yeah.
That can support it.
Yeah. Yeah, be a living unit.
I just want that well defined, so people know what a, you know, what a unit can be.
Yeah, well, they're going to get the septic permit based on what the soil will do.
Per bedroom, just like every little home, that's what you can design it to.
Steph had a note in here on the bedroom that if you classify dens and other flexible living areas as bedrooms, that could lead to inflated bedroom counts and more cost for septics. But, but the counterpoint to that is, that may happen over time. Those things may turn into bedrooms, so.
Right.
And we're worried about water quality.
Right.
Okay. Any other big ticket items we want to flag?
Those are the big ones.
In the documents you have in front of you, what we'll do is we'll add additional notes we get from you tonight, and we'll just continue to use these as working documents with you all as we start to think about what this outreach and engagement is going to look like. So the last one is workforce housing. Mark, if we can go to the next slide. And what you have in front of you is kind of a fresh look because, once again, a little explanation of what workforce housing is and how you are not in a good place as a community without any kind of workforce housing provision, according to state law. And we talked about that. So anyone that's watching at home, this is one of the reasons why the planning board is looking at this, is to try to be in compliance. Crystal and Mark pulled some stats together, and I think he may have shared this with you verbally last time, but you know, a, a for sale workforce housing unit in Brentwood right now is up to $392,000. It's hard to come up, even with a modest single family home. There may be a way to do some modest single family homes, but townhouses, providing some other options, might help you be in compliance. Doesn't mean someone's going to come and build them, there's no guarantee in that. But you, your housing chapter did an excellent job of kind of talking about the need for workforce housing. And then if we go to the next slide. We pulled, Crystal pulled the two examples that the state included in the housing toolkit. We figured that was a good place. It wasn't us picking a favorite town, there are other workforce housing ordinances we can look at, and if you're aware of ones you like. But just to get a sense of how two different towns, Wakefield, Barrington, have structured it, to give you a sense of like choices that can be made. So were there initial thoughts or questions on that? It's a big topic.
Where, where is that in Portsmouth?
That one in Portsmouth is actually not too far from Rye, it's off Route 1.
Okay.
Yep.
Density bonuses, I forget, Mark, what are density bonus, we used to have workforce housing between North-
It goes 20.
Provide a density bonus.
There was a ma-
We didn't provide one.
Well, we allowed more units of a certain percentage of the units who are workforce, right? I mean, that's what-
No.
No.
Cluster ordinance? We mandated that a certain percentage of-
We mandated that a certain number had to be.
And the density bonus came from the cluster development itself.
Correct.
But how do we gauge that as to what, it has to be realistic. And I, I saw in here, you know, you're talking about workforce apartments in the area-
Yep.
In the, in the Portsmouth Rochester area.
Yes.
And workforce unit or rental unit would be $1,700 max all in, so that's all your utilities in. And right here in Brentwood, across the street from my house, there's about a 600 square foot studio apartment that rents for $1,700 today. And that's what people are getting.
Because there's no other options.
Right.
If there were, if there were more choices, if there's more inventory, then it would help drive the prices down.
So that's what I'm thinking about this density bonus. How, how do we structure that so that there's, it isn't just a piece of paper that we're holding up?
No, it's an excellent question. It goes back to Kristen's comment about when we talk about 24 units in a building and like how many units, 12 units per acre, all that. They're all related, right? So if you allow a certain amount of multifamily units to be developed, and then you have a workforce housing ordinance that says you're going to get a density bonus if you can create some workforce units. We're finding that you can't do a, you can't expect a big number of workforce housing units. So I think in a lot of the communities, we've been talking like 6% to 10% of the overall units. It's been fairly low. Some of the ordinances that are out there talk about 25% or greater percentages. So we have here, Wakefield allows a density bonus of up to 25% of the units, and then has 20% of them actually being workforce housing units. And so we want to play around with that number. There has to be an incentive for the developer to have the market rate units and the workforce housing units together. But then, as you were just talking about, if you could have some of these built, there would be more choice within the community. It may level out some of the prices. No guarantees.
We, we talked, it's been over a year probably, about, so there's workforce housing and there's mechanisms that you might use to, to make sure that you can meet the requirements in terms of income and stuff. But is there any way to incentivize building starter homes? You know, just things that are-
Not in Brentwood with the two-
Not in Brentwood.
The two acre lots.
Density, density, density.
I mean, if a starter home was like the little cottage community, right? Like, these are starter homes.
Yeah.
The way I understand it, to actually meet the criteria of the workforce housing mandate by the state, you just need to offer housing that's under 392,000. So if you have a certain number of those homes for sale-
Don't.
Or that can be built under that price, you meet the standards of the, of their mandate.
They don't necessarily need to be, have any kind of income restriction or deed restriction or anything, or designated workforce. But if the whole development was built in a way that, you know, they're all 900 square feet and-
Yeah.
Tiny lots, then they would be under $392,000.
You're continuing with that 30-year lock, right, on cost?
Yeah, and what we found in another case was to make sure that the, they can sell it for at least what they bought it for. So that, we talked with Glenn about this, if the interest rates go up, all of a sudden someone's upside down. And so that's been something that communities have learned from. And so if you bought it at 350 or under the 392 and interest rates change, you can at least sell it for the 350 you bought it for.
Would we be able to limit occupancy? I know that in the age restricted units, they were only allowed to have a certain number of bedrooms, especially certain number of bodies. Could we, which means they're not supposed to build more bedrooms, right? Could we do something similar there?
Well, the, the number of bedrooms on your building permit should equate to your DES.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is that's a way that people often get more value out of, like, they turn it on and sell it for more because they've added a bedroom, they've added this, they've added that.
Yeah, usually there's a deed restriction where you can't.
You're missing the whole point of having workforce to begin with. It's supposed to be a sustainable for sale, no more than 15% of what you bought it for.
Is that what it is, 15%?
I believe that was the number, 15%.
Price index every year can go up.
Yeah. But that was the whole point of it, is to maintain some level of housing in your community that could be affordable to the workforce. But if you do smaller homes, eventually they're going to put additions on.
Unless you make it so they can't, right.
Right, it, it, right, but-
Well, there's no problem in them putting an addition on, it's just that they're, they're, they can't recoup more than that percent of-
But is, of increase in the value. Is that constitutional?
But that, but that gets back to the question of, can, can we design something that would just naturally stay-
At its place.
Of, you know, accessible because it's small, because you-
You can't build anything.
You can't, right. You can't expand it.
Yeah, and you pointed out the cottage clusters, so we should continue to talk about that as making that an option. So the, the picture at the top right, the cottage clusters, they are, they're probably 900 square feet or smaller. They're close proximity, they're probably on a shared lot and they're condoed units. You could have them for, you could have some for sale and some for rent. But they will track in a certain place. You can't add more bedrooms, you can't add big garages and barns. They're going to be what they are. Doesn't mean they won't be desirable.
Yeah. Through condo docs and homeowners association, that's-
Right.
Would you, you control that?
And that might be a way to get at a smaller unit, whether it be for someone just starting out or somebody who would like to move down from a much larger home as kids are gone.
That's definitely something that we're seeing in town, is that there are people who are feel, are feeling like they're forced out because they can't afford the taxes on their big house that their kids don't live in anymore, but there's no place for them to go.
Right. And here you get some built in community, because you have people of different ages and different incomes living together. So it would be a good alternative, and they're becoming more popular.
So I think they keep that in mind, that, that we think about how to design something that would sort of naturally be somewhat affordable over time versus forcing, you know, saying, you can develop something, but 10% or whatever, you have to kind of force into this model of staying affordable.
I like that. So it naturally tracks.
Smaller lots, you're going to preclude some of the, you know, the setbacks, building setbacks, you're going to preclude some of those concerns.
Valid, valid. Good idea.
Any other thoughts, just big picture thoughts on workforce housing?
You drew something?
Still something we want to continue to talk about?
We have to, don't we?
Yeah, you kind of do. You have to tell me you want to.
We, we, we want to be in compliance.
Right. You want to avoid legal fees.
We only have two houses in the whole town.
No, I get it.
I didn't know.
I have to ask.
I just, I just worry about they can't sell their house for, you know.
Yeah.
But that's what you buy into. We, we did.
I, I don't, I don't like that idea either, that you're restricting what, I mean, if, if people buy something that's small and modest and it's going to, you know, naturally be that way, but telling somebody that, oh, you can't, you can't-
Because we had one to, we had one to build capital because we've restricted you, but not your neighbor.
Right.
Do we only have one place like that? Only one, right? It's like two or three roads, it's like a-
Bottom lane and I guess part, maybe Kennedy Circle.
What?
Yeah. Yeah, there's like, it's those three roads over.
It's a cluster development with workforce housing in it, yes.
Or, um, do you, can you differentiate between owner and renter occupied? So could you have a set, you know, could your workforce housing address just rental units? So they're not getting into this restricting the owner?
I think you want to do both.
Yeah.
But we can look at other models that are a little bit easier. I mean, I, if I was sitting in the shoes of the staff at the planning board, I would want as easy a process to track as possible, so I get that. I know Amherst had some mixed results with having workforce housing. Mark knows more about this than I do, so I'll check with them, but they had some different ways you could go, and some of the units were built to be 1,200 square foot, single family homes, and they have stayed. They may be more expensive in Amherst than they are in some of the surrounding communities, but they are at that part of the housing market, and they can't be added on to, can't, you know, add garages and bedrooms and stuff like that. So they always will be that size, and they'll always be affordable to somebody within that community.
Deed restrictions are pretty enforceable legally.
Right.
But if you have restrictions on the price, and you buy the thing-
Yeah.
And then prices go up, which is very costly.
Yep.
And then you want to sell it, but you can't, you got to sell it for what you bought it for.
No, just not less than what you bought it for. Just not less than what you bought it for.
And up to, right, up to a certain amount?
Right.
Welcome to America.
As things go up, and there's a new house over here, new house over here, and they've gone up 30, 40%.
Sure.
You're still stuck with that. And they're going to say, well, this isn't fair, I'm not getting the advantages. So is that going to be a deterrent?
I mean, you got the advantage when you bought the house.
Right.
At a lower price.
You, you need to trade with the guy that wants the downside. The old guy wants the downside.
Yes, yes. But it's a, but you see why it gets-
Attorneys are going to-
Gets very confusing.
Gets very confusing and-
Attorneys are going to be on that like stink.
We already have, we already have.
Have, have, do we have problems with that yet?
From, not that I'm aware of.
Selling or-
We, we do have an affordable housing development. I, I don't know, do, do we know, Glenn, who monitors that? Is there, do we get any reports or anything? How, how?
There is support, the, the homeowners association is required to have a monitoring service. But the last I heard, and it was about four years ago, the person we used either-
One out of service.
Died, I, I-
Oh, no.
Before anyone expected. And it was a challenge to find anyone that would step in and do that activity.
Should there be something in the ordinance that says that the homeowners association, if that's the case, if it is a homeowners association, that they would have an annual report to the board of management?
We can look at that.
But then whose job is it to keep track of that? Whether or not people do it?
Well, then it would be illegal, you know.
It all, yeah. We, we have a, we have a tracking issue. Any other, any other key points you want to raise now for them to think about and-
No, it's very comprehensive.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, you're welcome, no, we're happy to be involved, glad we don't have to make these decisions tonight. Glad we have time. The other things we just wanted to touch on before we leave, if we do want to do a late May, June, if we could coordinate maybe offline, I can reach out to Kristen and Glenn and Mark. But if we can identify a good location that you think would work well for a public event, and then look at their availability for some dates. We'd like to get that booked, so that as we meet with you over the next couple of months, Crystal's going to be helping us arrange that, and she can create some of the outreach materials. We can help you spread the word, we can bring drafts next time if we have a date. We'd be even better.
Do you want to use the rec center?
I-
Yeah, why not?
I think that's really our only option. Be the rec center.
We could do the library, but, no, not for tables.
No, not for tables. I have discovered that you could have two out of the three things, but you can't have parking space and AV equipment. You have two out of the three, but that's it.
Say, say that again?
You can only have two out of the three between parking space and AV equipment.
Okay.
This seems like more of a, like a poster kind of situation.
Yeah, so typically, we would do some posters and let people go around and answer some questions. We can talk about whether or not you think people need to get into groups and talk as well, um, so we can have that conversation next time. But if we can at least identify a, a, a large space that either has good AV or parking.
So what are we, what are we, what are we asking people, or what do we present?
We wanna bring people in early on in the process and explain to them that you did get this grant, and give them much more simplified information than what your packet is tonight. Kind of break down for them each of these three things, that there are some choices ahead. If the town would like to be in compliance with state law, there are some regulatory changes that we're talking about, and have them weigh in on some of these options.
And what's the consequence for not being in compliance with state law?
Um, pretty big legal fees.
Naughty, naughty.
No, no, like, multi-million dollar.
Absolutely nothing until somebody wants to do something.
And then they can kind of do, if what they're proposing is reasonable, they can do it.
Judge rules that they can do what they wanna do without going through any planning board process.
That's part of what you see builder's remedy listed in here, that's what that's.
Yeah.
Okay, and so will we have made any decisions before we?
No, we want, we want people to have an opportunity.
We, we've gotta sit down and figure out a hook.
Yep.
No, one, one thing here is that a number of board members were, went to some of the, um, HLP series before lecture series. Now, currently, there's three of us that are participating in that, and obviously, it's all about education. And Glenn points out to us, he said one of the most important, uh, aspects of this program is that this year is gonna go by so fast.
Right.
That it's gonna be tough, and even in May, you know, people, kids are getting out of school. Now, we have this great town newsletter that comes out once a month. We, I don't think we wanna hit people where they have with too many multifamily docs until you have your seminar, where you can really sit down and explain that. But if, if we could just talk to people, like, maybe the first issue would be a, a short story about, uh, current state law and how we're deficient in that, um, we, we can get the dates, uh, I'll get the dates of the closing for the newsletter monthly, uh, input.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, it is, okay.
I think you're right, I think if we could, we're, we're happy to draft stuff and run it through staff and the planning board, but if we could explain people what, that you got this grant, what you're doing, what the state law is and that you're not in compliance, like spoon-feed some information so they can do their own research and they can ask questions, and then advertise the event.
Now, the first paragraph of, of every, it's brilliant, I mean, that's the stuff that we should be releasing to the public, so they can digest it, and they know what's going on. We need that slow leak where they see it, digest it, read a paragraph or two of this. We really should be out there with an outreach, that's, you know, that's the way you do it, and, and slow, methodical ways.
I'd be willing to talk to the newsletter committee, find out what size, what.
That'd be helpful.
And that goes to every household.
Every household in town.
Mark.
That would be helpful.
Some people say they, they don't read it, or they read it online, but that comes to your house in seven or eight pages.
Bruce, um, under their contract, they have to, like, you can more tell them what size you want. And if you just give them advanced notice that I'm gonna need two pages, then they have to print it.
We usually do like five, five hundred words.
That's, I'm, I'm just saying, you don't, you don't have to ask them, you don't have to ask them.
Okay.
We'd like to have a working relation.
But we, we'll, Mark, Mark can call you, we'll, I'll check with the editor there, and we'll find out. So we, we're gonna be reasonable, we wanna do it each month successively.
Great communication.
That's great, no, it's, we wanna use that, that's wonderful. And then whatever we develop, we can also give to you if you wanna use digitally through social media and other ways.
Does the state mandate how many ADUs you need?
No.
So if you have three, you've met compliance?
Yeah, if you, if you allow the opportunity, that's what you need to do, allow the opportunity.
Well, if you're more, if you'll allow less.
As, as far as ADUs go, the state will be angered if you don't allow ADUs.
Right.
Because the state law says that we will.
No, correct.
So they don't, they don't tell us, we have to have ten percent of our housing stock be ADUs. They simply say, you have to make provision that if somebody wants to construct an ADU, your regulatory scheme doesn't prevent it.
But you're always gonna have some restrictions, you gotta have septic, driveways, blah, 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 blah.
You don't have to have, I mean.
But if you have any restrictions, now you, you can reduce the number, all right, and maybe not plagiarize the whole town. I mean, we don't wanna look like we're in Salem on the main drag, right?
No, I can understand that.
So.
Do we not?
Like, my personal convention, findings are, I would like to keep it very minimal. I, Brentwood's a good place to live now, and if you get three houses where there was one house before, and another one, another one, another one, that's gonna change the whole character.
So you have to allow multifamily, you have to allow ADUs, as Glenn said, you can't limit how many there are.
That's right, but, but by changing some of the restrictions, you can make it more compatible and also reduce, right? You can't have Scott and Guy comes in, so I'm gonna have six ADUs, I got some guys from Puerto Rico that wanna come up here and stay, and, and on and on and on. I'm not picking on the nationality, but.
Yeah.
But what if I wanna build six ADUs in my barn?
Pardon?
What if I wanna build six ADUs in my barn?
You're not in the multifamily.
Right now, it has to be a test of your house.
I think we're, I think, I think we're getting a little off.
Yeah.
That would be a restriction.
I think that's a fear, I think what we're just saying are fears.
I'm sorry.
Are you picking a date now?
We are going to, I think we should look at the school holidays and anything else going on in town, and can you help us find a date in May that works?
We can follow up with, be Mark.
The, the week off is in April, and, and the end of the school district, I mean, the end of the calendar year is, I think now, the third week of June.
Okay.
Yes, we wanna be before that.
So do we wanna do this on a Saturday?
Typically, weeknights are better.
Weeknight?
Yeah, we find, especially in the spring, Saturdays are for, you know, sports and.
Can we do one of our meeting?
Yard work.
Like, May fifteenth, we could potentially do.
Whoa, you guys are a con it, not anticipating.
We got a pretty good turnout with the, uh, the charrette there last year on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Did you actually, yeah?
I think a night, night is, wouldn't, I wouldn't think a night would be great.
You wanna go for?
Me too. Exactly.
Yeah, these guys are almost finished, can, yeah.
I think we go to the, to the meeting, the, the fourth Thursday, where we're not.
You think a night meeting will draw the planning board?
One of the ways you can do it, so we've had better luck across the board in evening meetings than we have on a Saturday. You know your community better, so ultimately, we'll do what you guys want.
We gotta, we gotta.
But what we can do too, depending on the format, we can do more of an open house format too. If it is more posters and people coming to get information and answer questions and talk to any of us that are there, you can allow them to drop in, so we've seen some success with like four to six, or four to seven type of thing. People can come as they're coming home from work, or before they picked up kids from daycare.
We have to figure out the hook.
Yeah.
Is it gonna be free food, or like a barbecue, you want that on a Saturday?
Yeah.
You gotta figure out the hook.
We'll talk about it some more.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe.
Get a date too.
I think a Saturday in May is ridiculous.
Maybe at the BRC on a weekend when there's baseball games and there's people over there and you put on a barbecue, you know what I mean?
Needs to be the first.
You have people already there, you can bring, we gotta talk about a hook.
Oh, sorry. Did you have a question about the housing?
The first of the items of the night, which was the, uh, the development of the twenty-five, the lot that was, uh, the, the property.
We, yeah, we haven't gotten there yet.
You haven't got?
Nope.
Yeah.
This half an hour was an hour, we need to.
Yeah, sorry.
The only other thing we were gonna ask you about, so Mark has a standing, the other Mark has a standing, um, conflict. He's gonna find out tonight if he has a conflict for next month. If he does have a conflict, is your first meeting of the month an option?
May first? No.
Just generally, yeah.
The third, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so if, what, I'll be in touch, and if that's a possibility, we might just ask to go to that meeting instead of the third meeting of the month. So we might ask to go to the first April meeting, instead of the last March meeting.
Can't, can't we, can't we just say May twenty-second?
What? Well, I think we wanna talk about it a little bit more to see if we do wanna do an evening or an.
I'll hold the date for now, 'cause it works on our end.
I, I think, I think Mark makes an excellent, excellent point, and Liz does, you've got your graduations in May, weekends, and, um, the REC Center is busy come May with, you know, baseball, baseball and things like that. So I, I think we're sort of stuck with a Thursday, well, a evening me, meeting.
The one other thing I'll tell you, if we didn't mention it last time, is there'll be an online component to this as well. So Crystal, one of the reasons she here, so she can have, continue to have the context of what we're working on, and she'll create an online version of all the posters, all the maps, all the questions, and that's for people who can't make it whenever we do it. But also, people come and they absorb the information, they have questions, and then they wanna think about it.
Yeah, well, our goal is to have a good turnout.
So we give them both options.
We could also afterwards, if we have the posters, we could move them over to the library and leave them there.
Absolutely. Yeah, they're your posters to use, so yeah, you can take them on the road.
Okay.
Thank you for giving us more than a half an hour.
Yeah, sorry.
Also, a lot of our population is elderly and likes the written, you know, some of us like the, so I think that's good to have those wherever you do it. I mean, the online component's nice, but some people don't.
And we can have copies here at the town office too.
I don't have to print it out and edit it with a red pen.
Now, but we're holding the twenty-second and looking at other possibilities.
Okay, twenty-second, yeah.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. A point of order, point of order.
Kristen.
Sorry, uh, ju, just, um, ju, just a quick point of order, if, if I, if I may. Um, I, I, I just, it's really hard when folks are, everybody, I know we were just having kind of an informal discussion, but when folks are all talking at once, if people are trying to listen to the stream, uh, I'm having a hard time hearing. I can't imagine folks watching the stream are, they're probably having a hard time too, so if we could just kinda, just, yeah, that's.
I apologize.
Reel it in, I, I'm gonna have to sit further away.
All right, um, we lost Letty, be back. Um, we have a design review hearing, Revolution Real Estate, for a conceptual site development on.
Yeah.
Uh, Route one twenty-five, number three twenty-four. I don't know what this is.
I didn't wanna put them all right away.
No, that's good. All good.
Where, where are we talking about?
It's just, where's one twenty-five area?
Yeah, we're sending.
Oh, um, yeah, yeah, this is, uh, one twenty-five.
Yeah, all right.
Hi.
This is one of those fine.
Right.
He's gonna use that for the people come up and sit along here.
Yeah, if you guys, if you guys wanna move your chairs, maybe, um, just move that up back a little. Unless you have, uh, digital.
You can look at this one if you want.
These guys are really good.
Yeah, I, um, I did see, we're sharing housing, they do top grants, and other communities that use them, they braved.
Okay, um, can you guys introduce yourselves and give us a quick overview of what we're looking at?
My name is Dan Page, we're with Wade Morrell, we're with Jones and Beach Engineers, here representing our client, Revolution Real Estate. The subject parcel we're talking about tonight is at three twenty-four, Route one twenty-five in Brentwood. Um, it's right across the street from Wright Space Self-Storage. Um, we're about two and a half miles south of the one-on-one, one-twenty-five interchange. Um, the parcel is seventy-five point four acres in the commercial industrial zone. Um, something to note, there's a portion of this lot that's in Fremont, um, there's about one point two five acres that's in Fremont. Um, any of the lot calculations that we show, only consider the Brentwood portion of that. Uh, site currently features a gravel access drive that leads to a larger gravel parking area. There's a steel building, um, that's kind of newer on the site, it's the current home to Hobby Trax, um, relatively new business, uh, like an RC hobby store. Uh, there's old sawmill buildings that are still on the site, some are open, um, currently used for storage. And there's a, a section of vehicle parking on a plan west. There's a wetland complex to the western portion of the site. Um, this was the, uh, well, there was remediation actions taken on the site, um, from prior impacts. So, um, something to note, you can see the historical wetland line is the lighter blue. Um, following the restoration work, that wetland line has moved to the base of the, the slope, so that's the darker blue line. Um, we're showing the wetland setback from that revised wetland line. So the red setback line is that seventy-five foot from the updated, um, edge of wetland.
Do you, excuse me, do you have a letter from like Wetlands Board saying that remediation is complete?
Yes, we do. The, the planning board on the seventh of December twenty twenty-three, um, voted to rescind the revocation of the recorded site plan. Um, so that allowed, uh, previous use of the site to continue.
But do we have, we get a letter, there was a state mandated restoration plan. And it'd be nice if the town could have a, get a copy of, they must sign.
I'm pretty sure we have a copy, but.
Otherwise, we wouldn't have rescinded the rescinding.
We do, we're a letting property, to our knowledge, that illegal landfill is at the beginning. And if the remediation at the meeting, to correct that.
Well, I'm not. I, yeah, I'm not asserting that it, uh, has, has not been done, but it would be nice to have a copy of that final, there must be some kind of a final inspection.
What was that date that you said?
I have it dated, uh, December seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Was the vote.
To the best of my recollection, at that meeting, that's why we rescinded it, is because the state had given us paperwork saying that it was concluded.
We'll, we'll find, we'll find it.
It'd just be nice as part of the file to have it.
Understood.
Good.
Um, y, y, you may be aware of, of this already, but just for your awareness, in, in case you're not, we do have, uh, an email in our packet from, uh, the vice chair of the Fremont Conservation Commission. It seems like they weren't sure if this project would, would affect Fremont, and given that, I, I believe you said that it does, uh, affect part of Fremont, is that true?
No.
Oh, it doesn't.
We don't plan any sort of development on that portion of it.
Oh, I apologize, I missed.
Part of the, the parent lot.
Thank you for clarifying, thank you.
It only affects Fremont if we get impacted, wetland behind the property, it's still impacted by illegal landfill that was put in place, because that wetland continues to enter Fremont, to our property, crosses over, comes in behind Bessie's Restaurant, ties into the wetland here.
I'm ju, I'm just gonna ask, we'll, we'll open this up for public comment, but let's get through the, their presentation, thanks.
In the proposed conditions, we're proposing three buildings. Um, two of those are contractor garage-type buildings intended to be leased. Um, first unit, building number one, is ten thousand eight hundred square foot. The second building is five thousand four hundred square foot, and the third building is office space, um, sort of leasing office for the development, and that is eighteen hundred square foot. We are under the impervious cover, um, maximum, it's thirty percent in this district. We are at twenty-five point nine percent total impervious cover. Uh, about thirty thousand of that is the driveway, and eighteen thousand of that is, uh, buildings. Uh, access to the site serviced by a single twenty-four foot wide access drive, leads to the greater parking area. Um, we expect that a, well, we know that an NHDOT driveway permit will be required. We ran site distance profiles to confirm that that will work, um, so we don't expect many issues with that. Uh, there's a turnaround spot provided for WB sixty-two sized vehicle, a typical eighteen wheeler, um, so those can get in and out without issue. Parking, uh, there's twenty-eight spaces that are required, we provide thirty-seven. The site is to be serviced by an onsite well and onsite septic system. Um, you can see the well is behind building number two, and the reserve four K area is up in the, uh, plan top right. Uh, we intend to pump to that location. Uh, drainage, we have a reserve area set off to plan west, um, and we also have some of that buffer, or to the west of the parking area that we intend to use for some of the drainage. Um, yeah, that's a basic overview of the site.
Yeah, so I, I think, Wade Morrell from Jones and Beach, I think one thing that's important for people that have been down in that site before, is you can see where the development of the edge of pavement that would actually end in, is probably another fifty feet of the existing gravel that would drop off, that is in that seventy-five foot buffer that would then be revegetated and create that, that buffer to the wetlands. So that's really important, you know, what you see today is not gonna be there, it's gonna be pulled back to a Route one twenty-five. Um, and the reason why we have the park that we do is what we're, what we're trying to do is have two parking spaces per unit that we're showing. Um, we did talk with the fire department about the size of the building, these buildings, because they're under certain square footage, would not have to be sprinkled, um, and so we'll move over with the fire department further as we get going, but, um, like Dan said, driveway distance, you can see both four hundred feet, both, all season side distance, um, and, you know, if you go down in there now, there's piles of dirt, there's debris, there's a lot of different things out there, so this plan would actually clean that whole area up, make that front, you know, we're not showing anything in the front setback, everything would be dropped down into the back of the site. So visibility-wise, on Route one twenty-five, you really wouldn't see anything other than one building and a lot inside that is probably two hundred feet off the road, so.
What, what are you planning for this? You said there'd be a leasing office, what are the?
The other two buildings are, uh, contractor garages, um, they'll be individually leased. No, not at this time.
So these are sort of big garage doors, or where the big, where the big vehicles come? Is that what those are?
Yes.
And you said eighteen foot, eighteen wheelers or whatever, like, do you anticipate, I don't know, how many of these are there? How, how many of those do you anticipate coming in and out, if they're all leased?
So there's no anticipation, uh, what we're doing is making sure that if a tractor trailer goes down in there, it doesn't have to back out on Route one twenty-five. So we provided a backup space with the provision to be able to come out. Backup space that you see at the top of the plan there also serves another purpose, is most of these contractor garages guys have trailers behind their trucks. So we need a spot that somebody can back a trailer and be able to turn so that it faces out of Route one twenty, one twenty-five. So we're trying to accommodate a lot of different uses that may go in there, like electrician. So we need a spot that somebody can back a trailer and be able to turn so that it faces out of 125. So we're trying to accommodate a lot of different uses that may go in there, like electrician or carpenters or whatnot. But we're not planning on this being a delivery type of, you know, there's no loading zones, there's no loading docks.
So it's not just putting tons of stuff in there with.
Yeah, because there's nothing retail going on.
There is no retail.
Okay. And is this one of these buildings, this one?
That's just a detail of the individual units.
Right, right, kind of here?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight units?
Nine.
So Glenn, we have comments from Glenn, so let's go through those next, and then we can talk about other questions that folks have. The first was what the units are proposed to be rental spaces or condominiums, so these are contractor garages that would be leased out. Tradespeople likely. The property was a subject of an NHDES wetlands violation remediation action. Applicants should be very cautious about properly maintaining all wetlands and wetland buffers through the development process. We've talked about that and you'll get some information back to us about.
Right, so.
The completion of that work.
You're talking about vegetating an additional buffer, Wayne.
Well, we're talking about, there's a 75-foot buffer, so right now, probably more than half of that is gravel service of the existing gravel parking. We're talking about taking that area that's in between the 75-foot buffer to the resource and replanting that.
It'll make it look pretty.
There is a vegetated buffer to the wetland. Because right now, all this gravel drops straight down 10 feet.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but what, what is constructed there now is the approved plan, or is part of this, part of the remediation, what you're talking about now, is that part of the remediation?
No, that's part of what we're going to be planning.
Okay, so all remediation criteria have been satisfied?
That's correct, and you can see that, like Dan said, those, those two wetland lines, that whole area that was the illegal fill has been pulled out by the actual person that owns this, did the cleanup, and that's why it's cleaned up, and now the wetland line goes to the bottom of the slope.
So you're talking about beyond that, the buffer, re-vegetating the buffer?
I think a site walk would be.
Dan said this is the old wetland, this whole area got pulled out and reclaimed, and then this is a slope. What I'm saying is, this is the top of the gravel right now, this whole area is going to be vegetated.
It's all gravel.
It's the surface of the moon.
A major improvement.
Yes, a site walk, I would highly recommend a site walk, so we can see the existing conditions on the site, and the existing building that's there that will be removed, correct?
Will be removed, it's the second phase of the project, so the bigger building would be built as the first building that would go in. That building would stay until the building at the bottom of the page was ready to go, and then that building would be taken out.
Are you aware, have you talked to KIP or a building inspector about what's going on with that existing building?
We have not. We're here first, so.
I would suggest that you do that before you have any plans of using it in the future?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, if it's going to stay, it should show as an existing condition.
It's going to be gone, it's just not the first building that's going to be gone. All the sawmill buildings that are dilapidated will be the first thing that will be taken out.
But would you be using it in the interim? Is it in use?
Right now, there's a lease to the RC people to be able to go in there, they have a portage on. It's really like weekends and they have a group of guys that go there and they run their grain towers and that's it.
Okay.
So what do you suggest, Glenn, should that show as an?
Oh, yeah, how do you show that on a plan?
Should that show? I'm sorry, let him, showed me something.
I just pulled it, yeah.
So I didn't hear your question. So the applicant is speaking, you wanting to leave one of the existing buildings there for a period of time until they go out, couple of new buildings. Should that existing building, they are going to use it and maintain its use for some time, should that show on the plan as?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna do an existing conditions plan when they actually apply to us.
Okay.
They always do that, and so that will show, and then they'll likely show us some sort of phasing plan for how they plan on, you know, building the three buildings.
We're doing, do a site walk, just, you know, there's been a lot of conflict with that property for some time, so I think Mark's idea of having a site walk is a good idea. Could you throw a stake in on one of, one of the building corners, just so when we go out there, we could see that market?
On the, on the comments, so one was about parking spaces, you have more than required, which is your right to do, and you explain why you're doing that. Plan for snow removal, will it be removed from the site or plowed into the buffer? Or somewhere else?
We'll show that on the final site plan, we'll show that it will be outside of the wetland resource area.
But it's not going in the spot that you're going to vegetate?
No, sir.
It's going to water it.
Not, it's not, we don't like to plant trees in them buried in the people's stomachs.
And then, because it's new construction, you need a, a new N.D.O. driveway permit? Got that? I already mentioned that. There's a lot of other stuff like signage and lighting and things that would come later.
I mean, to be honest, our hope is to come here, get some feedback from the board.
Yeah.
And then our next steps is, we want to dig a test hole to be able to see that, but right now, the frost is about 18 inches deep. So we're going to have a tough time getting that done. But we want to progress and start designing the parking lot, getting that DOT permit submitted, that's going to take probably four to six months, get the DOT permit, so really just want to make, get some good feedback from the board and, and the residents, that we have a very tasteful project. It'll be a new and updated type of business, and word on the street that we've heard is this is a need in the town to have these kind of guys, so that people have a natural contractor space for themselves and not all over town, and everybody has their own business type of.
Do you prefer a certain type of contractors?
We have not identified any contractors at this point. They'll be large enough, like Dan shows a typical, it's a lodge unit, and there'll be lodge doors, so somebody would be able to take out a larger unit, truck or something in these units.
Then they could rent two units perhaps.
Yeah.
Questions from the board? Comments?
I think we all think it's a improvement, I'm sorry for, for alluding to the past owners and past activities and whatnot, but when you fight something like that for a period of almost a decade.
Yeah, when you go down in there, Bruce, it's not a place that you want to, it's not a place of that.
It's a.
It's something that we want to be proud of, and we're near a resource, so we want to make it nice and have it cleaned up, and use it right back.
I, I think during the site walk, you will get a good perspective of, A, where the buildings are going to be, and what needs to be planted and smoothed out.
Can we do a site walk in the current, with the piles of snow currently?
I would suggest, right, I want, I want a finished plan, number one, this is a conceptual plan.
It wouldn't serve any purpose.
Yeah.
Right, so I want an actual plan to be in place where we can go out and look at the, A, the existing conditions. We have a better idea of what's going to happen to the buildings that are on site. And B, where the, these buildings will be placed in the turnaround, and we'll have him stake some stuff out.
The snow will be gone by the time you come back from the flight.
I'll open.
To warming.
Not, not sure the groundhog agreed. Any more board questions before I open it up? Okay. And can you say your name?
Jerome Lyons, worthy of budding property to sell to the property.
Address, just for? Okay, well, yeah, across from Brew.
Should, should I go ahead and hand the microphone over so that folks can?
Sure, or you, you can come up.
Oh, yeah, that works, yeah.
Our, our concern is basically that since.
And if, and if you could introduce yourself one more time, that'd be great, thank you.
My name's Jerome Lyons, I live at 312 Route 125, we're the budding property to the south of the questioned property here.
Thank you.
Our concern is because of the previous owner or current owner, we don't really know if they just put their names as a new contractor under a new, different lease, but we were concerned about any surface water contamination, we don't know what was buried on that site under all that gravel that was brought in as fill, where that field dirt came from, whether it was gas stations, or whether it was sand, sandlots, we don't really know, because there was no, there was no oversight. So when somebody went in there apparently to, to basically remove the, the issuance of cleanup, did they do any soil testing? Did they, did they had, did they do a soil test, and your engineer come in to test to see if maybe, in the event of a catastrophe, well, earthquake or heavy flooding, if the soil that's in there is actually going to not be compressed to withhold the, the, the weight of a large building, or two, three large buildings like we're talking about? So are we just, what, what's going to happen?
So you're saying, but, sorry, Bruce, just a second.
All the gravel lot he's talking about was brought in without a permit?
And where the buildings will be?
Where the building is, where the parking lot is, so that's all field dirt, and as anybody who's ever looked at what happens in fill situations like this on a slope, in the event of an earthquake or heavy flooding, is that going to give way and cause a catastrophe? Is this going to end up in the wetland that we're trying to protect? Is, what's buried under that gravel? Did he, I don't know, did he bring in 55-gallon drums of, of toxic waste? I don't know, nobody knows.
It appeared, you know, most, most of the debris there was in, sitting in containers, I mean, some of it did spill onto the ground, but I don't think the town really has jurisdiction for that. New Hampshire DES, through the Wetlands Bureau.
Sure.
Took control of that, legal control.
Sure.
And they required a plan.
They made a Brentwood problem.
Well, no, they've required a remediation plan, which the state evaluated, DES evaluated, and.
And they brought in soil test engineers to do seismic.
I don't know about the seismic, but.
Density.
New Hampshire Wetlands Bureau, when we get a copy of the.
And they did, they did, they did water samples to find out there was nothing leaching into the, into the water?
Well, again, there's a report from DES, the controlling authority in the state.
Do you have a copy of that?
Well, we're going to have a copy, we think that we have a copy in the file, but.
Okay.
The gentleman, the applicant starts.
Well, I think it's something that needs to be reviewed prior to.
They're saying.
Before we build on it, we should find out what's underneath that.
But the applicant.
We're talking 16 to 20 feet of field dirt.
Yeah.
But the applicant is going to give us all the information from DES and the Wetlands Bureau.
It might be something that, that, that they're not aware of the history of what this individual did. That might be brought to their attention as well.
Yeah.
If they're buying a, a landfill site that is questionable as what's buried on it.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't really a landfill site.
Yeah.
It wasn't, what, what did they, what did, what's under the gravel? Do we know?
Was it concrete? Was it just construction debris?
Well, they, they were encroaching on the wetland with gravel, you know, we saw gravel being placed, but then again, we aren't really, don't have jurisdiction of the state Wetlands Bureau.
Is it Brentwood? It's Brentwood, right?
It's Brentwood, but the.
So you don't have jurisdiction of a Brentwood property in Brentwood?
Well, we, we do, but we, we have jurisdiction over what they build on the property, but the state, I will let.
Well, they built the landfill.
Well, I, I would contest the word landfill, but I'll let Mr. Morrell explain to you.
When you backfill a property without supervision and oversight, what is it called?
Okay, I won't.
An illegal landfill.
I won't get into that, but I will say.
I worked for Waste Management 20 years, I'll tell you, it's a landfill.
The state.
When I had garbage blowing into my property from their landfill, it was obvious they were dumping landfill material on that site.
So let, let's pause for a second.
And then they capped it with gravel.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The first thing I want to do is, Mark, when you get fined or get the NHDES report, will you share it with him? When will you leave your email?
Yeah, yeah, Mark and I friends.
Okay. So you get a report, but I think, I don't think we're in a position to answer your questions right now. I think you've raised good issues in that we need to do some investigating ourselves.
Yeah, absolutely, this is time to do damage control.
I don't, yeah, I don't know the history of the site myself, so.
And, and we're not voting on whether to. Oh, and I completely, I understand that, but this is like the first step, unless, before they advance, I mean, I, I think it'd be a great plan on a regular site, but based on the history of the site we're talking about, I think it might be a problem for the developer.
You're concerned about what it's being built on top of?
Uh, yeah, exactly, what's, what's underneath it, because the, the, I, I totally agree with what they want to do, I think it's a great plan. For the town of Brentwood, absolutely, I'm just concerned about what they're building on top of.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's my, that's really on my concern.
This is, it's going to be a process, this is the design review, this is just hearing one of many that's going to happen.
Right.
You, as in a butter, will be notified by certified mail, just like this hearing for the next.
You always have a welcome door, open door policy with us.
Yeah.
If you want to come in and walk our property, I know you're more than welcome to.
Exactly where you are.
You played there.
When we have a site walk, you're invited to come to this.
Yeah, the site walk, open to the public. But I think, I'll take a look at the report too, and, and we'll try to find out what they actually, you know, investigated beyond the wetlands. If, if they looked at what was buried there.
Okay.
And.
To investigate what?
You don't.
I'll tell you, that their concern was restoration of the well. And as far as it being a landfill site, the property owner now, and whoever purchases it, and thinks that they're going to construct buildings on it, are going to do proper land testing, because these are going to be engineered, designed buildings that have to have certain compression features of the soil, or it won't work. And that's, but that's the responsibility of.
The developer.
The property.
Right.
Yeah.
And they're building where buildings have been for a long time.
Right.
I, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure the timeframe that you're saying the landfill was there, but for the structures that are there, they've been there virtually the entire time I've been with Brentwood.
Correct, there isn't any building taking place on, on the disturbed portion of the site, so.
Right.
Yeah.
This building that's showing here, the one that is basically in the footprint of the one that's existing, was the only building that's on site right now. The, the gravel lot they're showing was everything that was brought in and developed, without oversight.
So there's a building here right now.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, did you ever issue a permit for them to fill that?
No.
So there's your facts. That's why you got, that's why you issued a cease and desist order against Carl Rulo Jr.
No, we issued a cease and desist issue because he was intruding into the well and excavating. He walked.
And all of that was here, none of that was here.
All of, all of the cease and desist action was for area from where this parking lot shows here.
Right.
Westward to the actual well.
So you never, you, you never issued? Oh, just, I was just concerned about what was, what, did, did? Sure, did, so, so they, he was given permission to backfill this entire area with gravel then?
I am not saying that.
Okay, so he did it again, without oversight?
Just for, just for my.
I don't believe that that would have been Rulo, because he didn't own the, he wouldn't have owned the land then.
Fahey, of course, went in there initially and, and put in most of the, the fill, but that was 30, 35, 40 years ago.
So this gravel lot here is 30 years old now?
The Fahey land where the sawmill was, planer mill, they, they were there over 40, 40 years.
I just, I just want to clear.
Sure.
I want to, I want to clarify, yeah, so when you're talking about what was filled in and that it, you know, that they were bringing in whatever, you think that was here, or?
40, 40-yard rollout boxes full of debris and, and concrete and field dirt.
But it was, but it was over here?
On this large section, right here.
Okay, I think that's where we're maybe not on this, not.
Because.
We don't know, yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
We'll, we'll find out some more.
Yeah, when the snow melts, you guys, we can go walk around.
Yeah.
We're just looking at.
I thought, it's, it's in everybody's, in everybody's.
Yeah, no, appreciate you bringing.
Picture when they're here to look at what's under the ground versus.
Yeah.
Because he wasn't a great neighbor. Thank you.
Yes, it's, it is, the Rulos have not owned it for a year and a half, two years?
It's, it's still sore.
Absolutely.
No, Fahey was the. Fahey was 40 years ago.
Okay.
Right up through the early 2000s.
Yeah.
Where SKS lumber was.
But thank you for coming in.
Oh, you're welcome.
Bringing us to us and.
It's a concern.
Appreciate it, absolutely.
I'm sorry, it's just, we don't have enough information, once we get the information.
Absolutely, oh no, absolutely, I appreciate it.
We're not trying to hide it.
I just want to make sure everybody is aware of, we don't know what's under that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a beginning of a process.
Very concerning.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Were you here for?
Well, that's, that may be our new planning board member, Brett, Brett Lambesell.
Any other, any other questions on this, on the design review before we move on?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
I wanted to say thank you to the neighbor bringing those concerns to our attention. You know, we will be doing borons out there to find out what's underneath the ground. We need to do that to make sure whatever footings that go in for the buildings and everything, that we can support that building. It's a huge investment in the property, to be able to put these buildings up, and so we won't put those up. we won't put those up if we know, you know, there's a landfill underneath there, we'd be doing something different. So it's one of our due diligence things that we'll be doing, but we really appreciate the butter bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, and if you find any historical information you can share, pass it along.
Well, what we usually do is, we, we do Google Earth, and we start back in the, the early eight days, and you can see how it transforms over the years, and you can tell when fill goes in and when it doesn't, and that's exactly what DES does. We follow the same protocol, so we know exactly when it went in, and we can actually see photos sometimes of when it was going in, so we can actually see if it was real material or not.
Okay.
So we'll be doing some due diligence. Appreciate the board's time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A good project.
We hope so.
All right. Um, next up, public hearing on the housing master plan chapter as amended, which we have discussed a couple of times. Is there any new information to discuss before we vote? And we can take public comment, but I don't know if there will be any.
If, if this is the appropriate time, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Any public comment on the housing chapter? Planning board comments before we vote?
We talked about it before, it was actually a great, uh, let me back, put some context to it. One of his better chapters.
Not saying no, not saying the other chapter.
I would like to say that it's, it's, it's indicative, it's indicative of the great work that Mr. Greenwood does for us, and he did a splendid job on it.
Okay. Any other comments pertinent to the chapter?
Pertinent.
All right. And you had a, a motion in a second. All ready? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just gonna abstain, cause I don't feel very...
Extension? Okay.
Ocarol.
No, any nays? Okay.
Nice job.
Thank you, Glenn, for saving us on the housing chapter. All right.
My job. Our PC put down a lot of the facts, but you went back with some, some context to it, so...
All right.
It's good.
Uh, contracts from Mr. Greenwood.
Is that why you're being detailed? Maybe that's why he's torturing you.
Perhaps, no, it's because it's Bruce. And torture seems to apply.
Um, anything you wanna, uh, call our attention to?
Um, the only difference in that one from the previous year is that I will provide memos to the ZBA when they ask for them.
Mm-hmm. Sorry, just for clarification, when who asks for them?
When the ZBA asks.
Who on the ZBA? Would that come through, um...
Through Mark and the chairman.
Well, I think, I think there was a vote at the ZBA meeting that they would like to receive your reports.
That's true, that's a factual statement.
I just wanted to clarify that when, who has to ask for it?
I think, we just, the process would be just like our, our hearings. You, you automatically give us your comments prior, and I, I'm sure we can go back and watch the ZBA film, but that, that was a vote. It wasn't just a consensus, but it was a vote that, that you would continue to provide those.
Is that a significant time commitment?
It is done.
Okay.
And there was a vote to the affirmative.
And you will, uh, attend up to 24 meetings?
Up to 24 meetings.
Wow. And the capital improvements program?
Is included.
Is included. All right.
Could I make an amendment? Or, or, or try to amend Mr. Greenwood's contract?
You can try.
I would, I would like to possibly amend his contract to, um, uh, provide one master plan chapter update a year? Just one chapter? I'm trying to create a contingency plan for our master plan? Just one chapter, Mr. Greenwood? Not three chapters?
Okay, let's...
No?
The, the master plan chapters were all just done separate from the circuit wiring contract.
They, they were, but I'm trying to make an amendment at this moment if someone wants to make that motion.
Three this year.
Would you, would you, hold on. This would come with additional funds, yes? Are you asking him to...
No, no.
Why would we pay him less to do more things then?
Well, if, if, I'm just saying, if he has time to maybe provide a master plan chapter, if he has time.
Nah, I'd rather he focus on the actual things.
Oh, oh, okay.
I, I'm comfortable with leaving it as is, and if things are light, like they had, like we had a period of time where we didn't have too many applications, and you're willing to help on chapters, that's fantastic, but not necessarily locking him into...
I, I think that's, that's basically implied here, because your first paragraph says assistance will be provided over 12 month period beginning January 1, 25, terminating December 31st, 25, and will include eight hours of onsite technical assistance each Wednesday of each month. So if there is more, I mean, that could fall into technical assistance if for some reason things were very light.
Right, and stuff, stuff happens that this doesn't, doesn't think about, like the meetings for those sign ordinance changes. That's just something we throw in as we go along. Part of what the planner should be doing when he's, when he's here.
We trust you make good use of your time anyway.
And if the Wednesdays are not, like if you have Christmas and New Year's on a Wednesday, do you come in a different day?
He does. He actually came in and asked if that was okay.
I do.
Yeah, I'm just double checking.
We can't require him to come in those days?
No. All right. Um...
Just kidding.
I failed. I tried.
I said you could try. Um, sorry.
If, if the time's appropriate, I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bruce the second?
Any nays?
Bruce.
Abstentions? Thank you.
It's gonna be an uncomfortable Wednesday for us coming up.
Good luck. Okay. Um, Housing Academy participation update. So we have three people who have been participating. Any, any big updates?
Who's, who went? Well, like in report, we had some great Panera sandwiches.
Okay.
I started talking to...
We've been here an hour and 40 minutes, so let's...
I'll leave the comment, but no, it's been very useful, and that's where I came, kinda came up with the idea, the educational part of the, forming the community would be good to start with our Brentwood newsletter articles, and that's something they told us. I didn't think of that on my own, but, um...
No, Mark came up with a couple ideas with the...
He didn't?
Yeah, no, so it was a positive experience.
It's been good, though.
And we have another one, I think it's this coming Wednesday in Concord. And then there's a webinar after that. It's a lot of stuff we, we know, but I mean, it's just, it's good.
Good reminders.
And I think one of the biggest things there is they involve, try to involve everybody that comes to the sessions, and there were probably, I don't know what, 50 people there all told, different towns. So they would ask people, they had little discussion groups, and they would ask people to relate what problems they were having, or concerns, or positive things, and it was really good.
So maybe if you're going next week, maybe ask people about what we're doing, you know, having a session, what other experiences that people had at night on a Saturday.
That's a great point. That is a great point.
See if you get any ideas. Other than food, I think we should provide food. Um, okay. Planning and land use regulation books. You have gifts for us?
Ooh. If you want one, I'm more than happy to give it to you, but...
But I don't have one.
If you don't plan on using it, please don't take it. It's expensive.
Can I turn mine in? Do you want this back?
Anybody else? Oh, not that one.
That's yours. You have, I'll take one if you have an extra.
When we get elected, this is the book that we should swear, you know, we should swear on.
I swear at this book, oh.
Uh, Tanya Lane Town Council updates.
I guess I'll speak with...
Different colors.
Yeah.
I'm happy to share.
Laura today. And she has two thoughts. Her first thought is she doesn't think there's an ice cubes chance in hell that we would win in a lawsuit, because we signed a plan that said that they were gonna do just what they were gonna do.
Even though it said two different things?
Even though it said two different things. Um, and we then did inspections, and they're in the ground.
Say that again?
Every opportunity before they were in the ground to say, hey, that isn't meeting what our standard is. Now, she did say that a possibility is to talk to the developer and say, because these aren't reinforced concrete, and because we have that standard to ensure the integrity of the culverts, that we could require a bond be established that would repair in the future if there's any damage to the culverts.
Right, I think the, my big takeaway from the whole thing is that the, the culverts that are in question are on, which will be town right away, town land. And we've had a, this requirement for the reinforced concrete pipe for 45 years, and the reason was, you know, back at that time, going back that many years ago, we had problems with driveway culverts being crushed, you know, oil trucks, moving trucks, and what, whatnot. So we, we adopted that standard again 40 plus years ago, and I would challenge anyone here to drive around town, and I would give you $50 for every RCP pipe that you can, that you'll find in any of the developments that has been damaged in any way. It's expensive. If it, if it does get damaged, you may have to rip the whole driveway up. And Wayne, I'm, I'm really just personally very upset. I think we had one put over on us by your, not necessarily you, but by your client, because you came in here and you requested a waiver to allow the use of ADS pipe outside of the public right away. And then you withdrew that. We have, we have all the paperwork, we have the paperwork on it where you withdrew that waiver request. So personally, I'm saying you knew damn well what the specifications were. I don't know if the applicant, if the client was looking to save maybe 75, $80,000, and that's why that occurred, but you've been working this town for many, many years. In fact, your hair was black when you first came to town here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Bruce, how much...
I, I don't wanna, I'm just, I'm speaking personally to this.
Yeah, so we probably shouldn't do that during the meeting if that...
But, I, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll just admit that, it's just one member, I'm not representing the board.
Speaking as a member of the public, you, you have been.
I, I've been, you know, very concerned, so I would like to ask the board, I talked to Steph a little bit last night at Candidates Night, she's an engineer, civil engineer. I wouldn't personally ask as a member of the public for you to rip the culverts out, but I would like to, and she's agreed that we'll have some time here before the next meeting to look at the ADS situation. Doug and I were out looking at, I think Mark and Glenn went out too, prior to snowfall, and some of those plastic culverts extended beyond the length, beyond the width of the driveway, you know, totally unprotected, there were no head walls at all. So I would hope to work with, with Stephanie to see if there's some, you know, head wall detail that we could meet and have a middle ground and have you guys put some supportive head walls on the ends of those culverts, rather than to rip them out. I mean, there would be some cost, but it clearly, you know, was the intent of the town. And I, I mean, I'd ask you as a member of the public, you know, why you submitted that waiver request, withdrew it, because you said, well, I'm only talking about structures.
Is this, I mean, are we...
Well, it is.
Rehashing, it's not gonna fix where we are now.
No, but it's, we have to have a path forward here. We can either, you know, go, go take a court case against it, or if we can come up with something that would ensure the townspeople, the taxpayers...
But talking about how we got here is not helpful. And I think what, what Glenn said is one remedy may be asking for a bond, because we can't predict the future, but that would be insurance that if something does fail in the future...
There's money to fix it.
There's money to fix it, so we don't have to argue...
Which is on the town's dime, which is my concern.
Right. And then we don't have to argue today about what you might...
Whose fault it was, or whatever.
Yeah, or what, you know, thing you might change now.
Well, I think if we changed it now, and we had a, had a engineered plan for head walls and they were put up, I would wash my hands personally of the situation, not require a bond at that point.
But I feel like that's outside of the, the requirement too, so it's...
Well, it'd be a choice for the applicant to go post a bond. I mean, if we talked about taking those, those culverts out, I mean, we could be talking about a 50, 60, $70,000 bond. Would the applicant be better off to construct the maintenance head walls now and avoid that?
All right. No.
You want...
Yeah, either way you want.
It's a board discussion.
I don't wanna put you, yeah.
In no way, shape, or form are you required to respond to any of it.
And I...
But I would just ask this board not to take action tonight, to let, let Steph take a look at the, some design criteria for supportive head walls and report back to the board next meeting, at which time we can make a decision on where we go from here.
Can you also make a recommendation on a bond?
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know why not.
But it was also our oversight, right? We didn't catch...
It's combination, yeah.
It's like complicated.
Yeah, I, I don't think we can...
Okay. I think enough said on this topic this evening.
Okay.
Um, town report submission, it's in your packets. They cut, I did include more people's names and thank yous, but they cut it. Um, yeah, we were trying to get it on one page. Sorry. Okay.
I thought we had everything we wanted.
Uh, in the, in the Brentwood newsletter, not in the town report.
Oh, it's not the town report?
It is, this is the town. This is, this is what's going in the town report.
It's already in the town report.
It's already in the town report. So this is an FYI at this point.
The town report is posted. If anyone is interested in seeing the town report- The PDF is posted on the town website. We are gonna have hard copies in hand tomorrow. We're gonna distribute them on Tuesday.
Yeah, no, when I got a copy back from them, they were like, we, here it is. It was, wasn't you?
The timeline was not good.
Yeah.
It was not a good timeline, I suppose. So an apology to the board would be adequate to say, you know, we tried to get it in front of you. We hope you agree to what has been printed. The timeline was tight.
I don't think we normally bring this to the board anyway.
No, because nobody wants to work on it, so the chairman always just had to do that.
Well, I'm trying to be amenable to give the due diligence of the board. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
Okay. Okay.
Is this the whole thing that went in?
This is what I submitted, but they cut it down. The town report is available if you just wanna see what went in. PDF on the town website. Okay. It doesn't have to be a mystery. TEC roadway contract funding. We don't have funding now.
Correct. Exactly. So I have the contract for you to sign, but you need to decide who's, where the money is gonna come from.
Well, we needed it in December, so-
I'm, I think, Glenn, would you like to comment on the timeline of that?
We said-
We tried. You asked them like ten times, so-
And I asked him by letter after our meeting on December seventh, or whatever it was. And his response came in February.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can-
Not super enthused about that.
Yeah. It's not great. And given that, given the budgetary situation, I'm not-
Are you asking a question?
No.
In your packet is the budget. If you can find a line that we could take that money out of.
I think our budget's pretty lean.
Exactly. There is no line.
There's no line.
Can you tell me again what this is for?
To update our roadway standards that are thirty-seven years old, and our thought had been in 2024, we had money that we didn't spend because of grants, and we're gonna try to encumber money, but you have to sign a contract to encumber money, and-
They didn't do it in time.
They hadn't been responsive, so-
So can we just say we don't have the money now, try again next year?
Oh, yeah, we don't have to sign anything.
Well, you can sign this. You just don't have to hire them.
Well, some-
Right? Like if you sign this and then, because it's, it's kind of a ad hoc basis.
There's no reason.
Yeah, but they have the proposals valid only for forty-five years.
Yeah. Yeah.
We were signing it, and I think we were gonna work it.
Why don't we sign it? How, how many months did they make us wait? Two months? Let's make them wait two months and then sign, and it'll be passed along.
There's, there may be some middle ground here. So as part of our discussion about hiring them, we talked about having Bell and Flynn, who's done a hundred percent of the road reconstruction here in Brentwood for the last forty, fifty years. John Bell is the principal there, and he's out on every job, and he's agreed. He's actually started working on it. I gave him a copy of our town road specifications, and he said, you know, there are some, some upgrades, some changes that really should be made. Now, that's his, his idea of it. So we'll have something, and maybe we could have TEC do a cursory review if we find we have a thousand, a couple thousand dollars left down the road, but not sign the contract tonight.
Yeah.
Perhaps if the updates are light enough, and Mr. Greenwood would be amenable to just writing a few new ordinances, and maybe we could adopt them in an interim process, if he's amenable to that.
Yeah, because that's not a, tell me, that's a public hearing that the board would have.
Yeah. Okay, that's a-
So is this gentleman willing to give us recommendations?
Yes, 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 practical, you know.
Okay. All right.
With any sort of, like, guarantees, like, it's just like, he's doing us a favor and therefore there's no-
Well, he's not gonna put an engineer stamp on it, but again, he has been solely responsible for every road improvement that you've seen here in Brentwood in the last half century.
I would love to give that list to Steph, and Steph read it, and be like, you know, and give her opinion on it.
That's a hell of an idea, Mark.
And then maybe Steph can give some comments, and then maybe Glenn can say, hey, this is real easy. I can incorporate this into this, and we can do that.
All right, you guys do that.
A real uncomfortable Wednesday.
You get the, you get the list, you share it with Steph, you take a look at it, and maybe we'll have a couple thousand dollars left at the end of the year that we needed.
Where are our current roadway regs?
What's that?
Where are the current roadway regulations? In that book? Okay. I'm just trying to figure out what different things are-
It says, "requirements for construction of roads and streets in the town of Brentwood." It's a heading back here in the-
Okay. Is it one of those green pages?
I think it's, or blue, maybe it's blue.
Blue section? Okay.
That's, that's the headings. Once you find that heading, see that.
Okay, say it again. What was the heading again?
Titled-
Roadway requirements or something.
"要求" specifications for roadway instruction in the town of Brentwood.
Land Use Engineering, asking for an extension for a site plan for seventy-nine through one thirteen Route one twenty-five.
Let's see, RE Prescott project.
The Castles.
Castles project.
Thirty? This is Route one twenty-five. Thank you. That would be helpful if we got a request with the correct address.
He really needs RE Prescott, and that's on twenty-seven. It's not on one twenty-five.
Well, I guess we can vote if we have, if we're confident we have the right address.
Yeah, it's the only project that must leave Prescott.
Then, then we can-
It's kind of redundant about, because I believe at that conditional, or the hearing where we gave him conditional approval, I know we gave him two years, because they asked for it at the time. And Glenn's pointed out, our subdivision regs say two years anyway for conditional approval. But to keep things moving, I'll make a motion that we grant the one-year extension to the Prescott conditional approval.
One-year extension from what we already-
We can just say one year now. We can do it. Next year, we can do another year.
But if it's already two years, right.
Extension of the, of the conditional approval that was granted on twenty-fourteen. They got it to twenty-fifteen. I mean, twenty-twenty-five, and this will get it to twenty-twenty-six.
But what, but what somebody just said is it's two years, so it already is twenty-twenty-six, so we've been making it twenty-twenty-seven.
But instead of that, Mark, dig back through the file. Let's just make the motion-
They're on the presumption that they only got a one year.
Yeah. So, so why don't, rather than saying year, let's be precise and say we're extending it to February fourteenth, twenty-six.
Do you want me to make a motion to a specific date?
That's, that's perfect.
What's that date again?
February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-six.
We have a motion to extend the approval to twenty-twenty-six for the property.
As long as they know where they're putting the property.
I will wordsmith it.
Make sure they know what-
Make sure they know where they're putting it.
For RE Prescott.
I would love an address before we-
Route twenty-seven, Hampshire.
Do you think this map and lot number are correct?
Mark's gonna write them a letter saying-
I can tell you that with my computer right now.
Approval was granted there if you're extension-
I know. I just, before we vote on something, I wanna know that we're voting on the-
I just said twenty-seven.
So do you want a motion? Do you want a motion, or do you wanna table it or something? You want a motion? You asked for a motion, but now you don't want a motion.
Mark's gonna check the address.
Okay.
Because I wanna correct.
Well, what we can do is just get the tax map.
How about this? Can I, can I, can I make a motion that we extend the conditional approval for the RE Prescott project at the former Castles on Route twenty-seven through February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-six?
Second?
Yeah.
Everyone knows the problem.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's the second to Bruce?
Liz.
I was. Or whatever, doesn't matter.
Any abstentions, nays? Okay. Check. Planning Board members serving on other local boards. So this is regarding somebody serving on the-
ZBA.
ZBA. And what is the question?
I'd like to make a motion that Bruce serves on the ZBA as a planning board representative.
I didn't hear you. Can you say that again?
I would like to make a motion that Bruce serves on the ZBA as the planning board representative.
Bruce Stevens?
That one right there?
I thought that was a conflict of interest.
It is not. Hence the RSA.
If you read the RSA-
I thought we went through this once before.
Well, I came across this RSA, and I read it. It's pretty clear-
Because we had a representative there before.
No, let, let, just let me finish.
Okay.
I came across this RSA, I read it, and I said, why, I can ask if a planning board member would like to be a ZBA member. It clearly states that a member of the planning board can also apply one member and be on a ZBA board, because it is any other local land use board. The ZBA is a local land use board.
And you're reading the RSA?
It's right in front of you. I have a copy of it, of the RSA, and what it states.
Actually, you can look up in your new book.
Ooh. Is zoning, is ZBA-
We had this discussion.
I don't, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Select board. It was, whatever it was before was not allowed.
It was the select board.
I'm gonna call a timeout and ask folks to speak one at a time, so again.
I believe the conflict before was that a ZBA member was both a member of the planning board by virtue of being the selectman's representative and a select board member. And so in that instance, he was serving three functions.
Right.
And that isn't what this statute is addressing. This statute is addressing just planning board members. And we, I believe, I was told, we got council feedback on the board of selectmen member being on all three boards.
Yes. And I, there was a specific person.
And they were told they can't do that.
And then my recollection is that there was a select board representative on the ZBA. And then there wasn't. And I don't know the details of how that happened either, because if-
Well, it was a complaint. It was a petition filed by a, an abuter to the property at the corner of one twenty-five and one eleven A.
Get closer to your microphone.
You know, we, we had an appro, well, we still have an approved site plan for, I forget what the name of the, what the name of the business was, but it's a former, for, people lived in town a little while. It was a Steve Hamilton property. Do you know where that is?
Get to the point of the story.
All right. And so the planning board, town approved, now I can see that gets under your skin. I'll just use that as a little-
Continue with the story.
But anyway, it is a story. But anyway, there was, there is a development there just south of the Vet Emergency Clinic on one twenty-five, adjoining parcel to the south. The town approved a commercial enterprise there. The abutters that lived adjacent to the property were against the commercial use of the property, even though it was allowed. And when the decision came down from the planning board to approve, part of their approval required a variance before the ZBA. And I served on the ZBA at that time, along with Andy, as a select person. And so the, the abutters, through their attorney, questioned the ability of the town to allow, or the authority of the town to have two land use members on the, on the ZBA, because they said, like, myself as a planning board member, I passed judgment on the case.
Right, yeah. Right. I'm talking about something diff, I'm saying, not me, select board representative on the ZBA. So there's just a planning board person and a select board person.
Well, now there's not a select board person.
And I'm trying to understand why.
Well, it came out of, we had a, it's just so many stories. NHMA sent two staff attorneys down here for a discussion with Brentwood, and we had a couple other towns come down, was held in this room. And they went over the rules and the enabling legislation that allows us to operate the ZBA. And they said at the time it was not good to have somebody serving as judge and jury. So we, as a planning board member at the time, they said it wasn't good that you passed judgment on the approval of the, of the application, and then you also went in and denied them a rehearing on their petition to vacate the planning board's decision.
What does that have to do with the select board?
But it's allowed to have, you, you are allowed by law to serve on the planning board, and one planning board person can also be on the land use committee. So we've had some discussion in the past that some things have maybe gone through without a lot of consideration, and it would be good to have somebody there involved, so we have a motion.
Could we table this?
Can I ask what?
Why would you?
What you're concerned about?
I remember that this came up, I think, when my husband was on the select board, and so he has a lot of background on it, and I would just like to figure out what it was, because I think it, I'm remembering differently than you're remembering. That's all.
We could have the motion concluded.
We don't need a motion. What we need, because what's gonna happen is if you would like to do that, you'd need to apply with the select board.
I will apply, and then I'll let them-
Right? It doesn't, this motion doesn't have any binding, legal binding whatsoever. Now, it's an open, open position for about sixty days, because I do have another applicant who want to be a alternate for the ZBA.
Boss?
Yes?
Are you suggesting that he apply to the ZBA not as a planning board representative, but just as a straight-up ZBA?
Well, I don't think it makes any difference. If you're on the planning board, you're-
There is no, there is no planning board representative, right? He would just be a member of the ZBA, and he's allowed to be on two land boards.
If you're running twice on the same thing, I think that's a problem.
And as far as the selectman's issue, I, I'm not beyond that person being on both boards, which is a problem.
I can, we can talk after a little bit. We can talk after a little bit about these specifics.
I'm just gonna go ahead and apply. Now, somebody more qualified applicant may come on, and I may be off, you know.
Right, they don't choose you to be the person.
Yeah. I think the, the issue, and I don't know the history, but the issue would be if the select board member who's on the planning board, me, was on the ZBA with a planning board member, that, that's not allowed, because you'd be on, there'd be two planning board people.
Correct.
Right. We're not doing that.
Saying that.
Bruce is free to reply, and I don't think we need to do anything.
How many people are there actually on the ZBA?
Four.
Five full-time members.
Four.
No, no, no. How many now? It's like two or four?
There's supposed to be five.
It's four. I, there are no alternates. I have four members, appointed members to that board.
And it's supposed to be five, and how many alternates?
You can have up to three alternates.
Minutes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Any changes? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay. If you've read the minutes, you don't have to abstain, but you are welcome to.
Abstention?
Um, Liz. Okay. Any other business?
Um, yeah. Why do we have our meetings at seven?
Your members.
Good luck.
Okay.
Or six-thirty?
That's good to know. That's, that's why I was just curious.
Not that it's all about me, but-
Well, it is when you're the chair. You get to decide.
I think it's, it's always been, I mean, if everybody-
The town was always, people were commuting to jobs outside of town. It was hard for them to get back.
Are you able to do six-thirty or no? It's too early.
No, it's, I'm just asking.
I like to, I didn't, because I worked kind of late today, didn't get, I like to come in at like six-fifteen and-
Okay. How about, how about I ask a different question then? If we have to cancel for like weather like we did last time, instead of just pushing it all off to the next time, could we just reschedule that meeting?
We'd have to renotice, have a proper notice.
It's a day then.
Say for example-
But we can do everything else that doesn't require proper notice.
You could actually-
On a different day.
I mean, as far as hearings, you, you, we always set a hearing to a date specific. So that would get accomplished by going just a week out.
We could have a work session.
But you can actually, an agenda can say, if this meeting is canceled, the default is that it is a week from this meeting date. You can, you can do that.
But that would have to be part of your public notice.
Yeah.
Right. It would be on every notice that you send out in the wintertime.
Every single one has a noting.
I think we've only canceled for weather once in the last five years.
I totally hear you. However, I'm about done. My brain stops functioning.
Perfect, because we're done. We're through the agenda.
You're in line?
I hear ya. I hear ya. I know. My meetings are long.
Especially if I have kids with me. I'm not famous though. They're gonna start to moan about it before I do.
I'll, I'll second.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Aye. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Please turn off your microphone.
Were you really, were you really skiing?
Yeah, I've been skiing. I, as a matter of fact, I came down.
Did you used to ski?
I've always skied.
Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, yeah. I've skied my whole life.